...town council meeting for Thursday, January 29th, 2015. Rogue call, please, Kathy.
[inaudible]
Here.
David Key.
Here.
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 Okay, presentation of any town council recognitions? We don't have any tonight. Item four, consider minutes of previous meetings. We have anything on that?
Yeah.
If you want to table this and have a chance to look them over and approve them at the next meeting, will we all say?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and second to table these to be reviewed by the council and okayed at the next council meeting. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents.
You need to vote on it.
Oh, that's right. All those in favor? Opposed?
I think we're going to sit here.
Thank God, just keep me on it. Okay. Receive and review correspondence and documents. Derek.
Yeah, real quick, in your packet, there's the DEP has denied the contract zoning change that the planning board and then the council had approved with some changes for the Jake's property. And you have a copy of the signed letter and of course, the appeal procedure is also an information sheet should we want to appeal it. Any questions on that one? I don't think we would appeal it anyways. I think either party, but it depends. Also in there is an email from Jeff McGlynn on, who was from AIM Development, who was one of the two gentlemen at our last meeting and had shared with us, he would like the council to consider change to the new demolition provisions and the ordinances for the bonding to make it say "may" rather than "shall" and also in the, when it comes to the work hours, we'd like to discuss those and then actually look at putting in the language of unless town council approves otherwise in certain circumstances and then he offers some other suggestions in there. Also, he, on the, no, I mentioned the bonding, right? Yeah. So, I don't know if you'd like to refer that to the ordinance committee if it is, probably would be later on when we have full members. I'm trying to think who we have on that committee now.
I think that was what our decision was going to be then when we initially approved this.
Peter Paul and Byron, so I'm not kidding.
Peter Paul and Byron?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's later on.
Sounds like a community area, I believe.
I was thinking what he said.
Says David Key here.
Let's see, I got a new one that says 128 now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Ouch. Yeah. Peter Paul, Byron.
Let's table that until we actually send that, probably sometime in March.
Yeah, after the town.
Okay. So, also you have a walkway, a couple of the councils had asked about how much it would cost to do the waterfront walkway and Dwayne threw some numbers together. These are initial numbers, I sent them back in note saying that I think we were talking about a single path, not using the machine, the track machine, but more the snow blower.
Is that what that MT snow blower, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, that's the bigger one.
That's one we already have.
Right. Yeah. So, of course, it would tie it up, but I thought it wouldn't take that long because we're not looking at doing two or three passes, we're looking at doing one with a walk behind it. We did it and we wouldn't be adding ice control and everything else, it would just be clearing like half of the walkway or a third of the walkway so people could walk, but also leaving some of it for people to cross country ski on or anything else. Haven't ventured down that course yet to do a trial run. I was going to do it on the next significant storm, but this significant storm was good, pretty big and with two others on the radar, I figured might be a waste of money to even try to do it, so after we get another foot, I don't know, that might be until it melts off a little bit or blows, I think it would be, could be a forever project with the, even the snow blower because of the depth of the snow out there. Of course, all of his assumptions assume six inches of snow and that's already a problem with the amount of snow we get out there. I did see a few footpath tracks already through that, those must be the die hards, I guess, that are, want to walk out there, but it was fairly nice for a change outside rather than freezing and below zero with wind going on. So that's just some information there. Got the code enforcement officer report and that should do it for those things. You guys got any questions? If I lose my voice, it's a good night, right?
So, is that going to actually happen on the waterfront, on the waterfront walkway?
I'm going to try it, one of these storms if it's a worthy project, but I wouldn't try to go through the amount of snow that's out there right now.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's go to item six, public hearings. We don't have any. New ordinances to consider, none. Item eight is discussion items. First one is Wilson Hall. Anybody here to talk about Wilson Hall?
They canceled their meeting, so I don't know if they got any up yet.
Yes, sir.
Very quickly, we'll be reporting into the next council meeting, there's an engineer going back for the second visit to Wilson Hall to try to make sure that the removal of anything overhead is done safely and it keeps the code enforcement officers' recognitions. So once we have that, I think we're going to have a bit of a break before we begin the month. The downtown will move in a brief fashion.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions on that? Okay, item B, mill update and related actions.
Uh, let's see, of course, the judge since our last meeting denied the temporary restraining order against the mill that the union had filed. The union has appealed the severance package decision and I am told that AIM is now the owner of the Verso Mill, correct Dave? As of today.
It's closed at present.
So as far as I know, that happened today. And in other news related to that, tomorrow at 8:00 AM, Bill Over, myself, Dave, I think Mr. Keen are going down to, to the mill actually to go look at the sewer plant just to see if the town could utilize it or not. And we'll see what happens there. I know that is about, I think it's 10 times larger than what we need, but we want to take a look to see whether or not may make fiscal sense if we could utilize that rather than building a new plant where a current one is. So we'll see what happens.
Any questions? Okay, let's go into item C, discussion of the CEOs taking legal action in the enforcement of an illegal junkyard in Bucksport. Jeff?
Thank you, I'm Jeff Hammond, the town's code enforcement officer. I first want to check that certain Mr. Fields is here. I'm not sure if he's here. Thank you. I'm back before you this evening to ask again for your permission to file a complaint in district court regarding unpermitted junkyard property at 993 Silver Lake Road. As you may recall, I was at the January 8th meeting and I showed you a number of photographs I had taken over the course of last year to give you a sense of the conditions of the property. After discussion, you decided you wanted to see a little more photographic documentation of that property, so that's exactly what I did do and I prepared for you three videos that I took. That's really, it's the next best thing to being there, I think, where you can actually see the amount of junk that I saw and I have Chris here to help me with the videos, so when you're ready, Chris, go ahead. There's no narration to these videos, but if you want to stop the video to ask questions, just let me know.
So where is, where is this relationship?
Well, excuse me, just could you show the PDA first to, just to give you a sense of where I took the videos. This is the house, garage, driveway, Silver Lake Road is here. The first video we're about to watch, I started here and walked into the backyard, aiming my camera to the left as I progressed and I went down here to the, roughly the end of where most of the junk stored, made a sharp U-turn and came back to this point here where I stopped. Again, I'm aiming the camera to the left here to get this here. The second video, again, I did a short trek here on the front yard in that direction here. In the last video, I photographed the junk that's on the right-hand side of the driveway.
Thank you. This picture here is, when was this actually aerial picture taken here?
This was taken 2013.
Okay.
All right, now let's go to video one. This video lasts about three minutes. We're looking over here into the front yard and I have another video that goes further into the front yard, which I'll show you in a few minutes. That's the end of video number one. Video number two is, and three are much shorter. As you can see, there's a house right here, they're enjoying the view. Any question? Yeah, thanks, Chris. Any questions about what you've seen?
Thank you very much for taking that extra rapid. Mr. Field, would you like to say anything before we take action?
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is why Mr. Hammond would throw in a comment, the people that live in the residence across the road, I haven't even met yet. I don't know if he has or not, but why he would come up with a comment like, I'm sure those people are enjoying the view. That's one little thing that, that he does to, I'm not going to say.
You know, it sounds like you're doing a personal attack. We're talking about whether you actually have a violating what is allowed in that area.
There's no doubt he got 99% of what's on our property clearly on camera. Now, I know you asked for a panoramic and when he showed up at our property, and he said, "Let me interrupt you before I," asked him about listing out, giving me some kind of guide to go by to cooperate and everything. He said that he was going to videotape and I had no problem with that. Do what you want to do, it's fine by me. But after seeing pretty much everything that was on my property and the first thing I was in hopes of you all to focus very in-depth with is, is the highlighted decision that he made on the letter that he sent to me. Now, if, if you all consider everything on my property as being junk, I don't know what else I can say or do.
I don't think that's for us to decide. I think that's what we need to do is go to court and have the court decide whether it is a junkyard or it isn't a junkyard. And that's what I think what we're here to determine. We've asked to have some pictures taken.
Okay.
We've seen all the information that we need to do and I think it's our job to make sure.
Okay, go ahead.
To make sure that we have the CEO, the code enforcement officer, do his job, which he's done. The next piece of that is for us to authorize him to go to court and present this stuff in court. We're not a court of law. It's up to us to make sure that he can do his job and to present this to the court. If the court determines that, yes, you're absolutely right, it's not a junkyard, then you can go that route, but it's not, it's not up to us to decide that here.
Okay, I understand you. The only thing I, I want to let you know, if you do end up deciding to allow him to proceed with the court, and I've already made up my mind, if, if it ends up going to court and the courts rule in my favor, it, it's just, to me, a waste of taxpayers' money, your time, everyone's time and effort. And, you know, for someone that's obviously, and I've proven that I'm, I want to cooperate with the codes and everything else, but if this ends up costing a lot of money in legal fees, you know, and at the last town meeting, you know, he made it clear that if it goes to court then, and they find in Mr. Hammond's favor, or the town of Bucksport's favor, then I would be responsible for the town legal fees and fines or whatever. But I assume that if they find in my favor, then all my fees would be covered, I hope.
Again, that's up to the courses, okay?
Yeah, okay, yeah. But I can assure you, if this goes to court and it's found in my favor, partially or completely, then there will be more financial problems in the, down the road for the town of Bucksport. And that's just.
Don't give us an ultimatum.
No, 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 no.
And don't threaten us either.
No, it's not a threat and it's not an ultimatum.
That's exactly what it is.
I'm just debating.
We didn't get this, get to where we are today, okay? We didn't. You did. Okay? You're the one that brought everything on your property. We didn't. We didn't put it there, but now we have to deal with it. Don't, you know, don't give us an ultimatum or threaten us or we'll deal with that, you go to court or what have you. Maybe you don't go to court. It's not for me to decide, but, so.
And then again, please don't feel like it's a threat. It's not a threat. I don't make it out to be a threat. Let me know my intentions, not threatening at all. That's not who I am and.
Okay, that, again, as both Peter and Paul have said, that all deals with what happens in the court. Our action here tonight is solely whether to authorize Mr. Hammond to proceed with this in the next step. And, you know, if you, if you have something that you would like to present that dealing with whether that is or is not a junkyard, solely that, then fine, but other than that, you know, there's not, these other things that you're saying are all court-related, have nothing to do with what's going to happen here tonight. So, if you have something that would support your position that, that is, you do not have a junkyard, please present it.
Okay, the biggest thing that I can present to you, I guess, is the two definition which you have from the last town meeting, that I think in this letter, I was in hopes that you could focus on that definition that Mr. Hammond gave me, the definition under the Bucksport codes that constituted junkyard. And I guess the biggest thing that I, I need to know from you people is a guide of what you all consider junk and what you all consider reusable.
We're going to go on the code enforcement officer's room, that he's decided that he has enough evidence to want to submit this to court as a junkyard. That's what we pay him to do. It's not up to us to decide if it's a junkyard or not. That's what we pay him to do. And he's going to present that to the court. And if the courts then decide that it's a junkyard, we'll go forward. If they decide it's not, then we'll readdress it. That's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Okay?
I guess that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Would you like me to come up here?
Yes, and state your name and where you're from.
My name is Mario Panero, I'm from Bucksport Mastel Road. I am the son-in-law of Scott Fields. I guess all I'd like to say is, because I've, I've been kind of experiencing all this stuff firsthand, you know, going out there, seeing what it's like, and whether or not it's junk or not, I mean, I think we can all agree just by the video that there's some usable stuff there and there's some stuff that's not usable. I guess what I'd like to offer before it goes to court, if that's what we decide today that is going to court, is not so much a, like, compromise, but as opposed, you know, to Jeff trying to deal with Scott and Scott trying to deal with, with Jeff, if, you know, Scott's family and myself can help in any way, if we can come up with some type of agreement where we'll get rid of X amount of stuff if it's deemed junk, or even sit down with Jeff to decide what is junk.
I think it's incumbent on us to at least start the process, though, because if we wait six months, nine months, we're right back here again. There's nothing wrong with starting the process and then still allowing you folks to work together, but if we, I truly do think it is incumbent upon the council to start the process. Where it goes from there is entirely up to you folks. If you want to continue to work with Mr. Hammond, that's fine, but by starting the process now, it at least gives us some legal standing.
I say, I say. Because, I mean, you know, due to timing, I mean, you know, obviously with this last storm, you know, there's not much that can be done out there anyway.
Court's working in a really slow fashion, okay? This isn't going to be, this isn't going to be heard in the next six weeks, okay?
I mean, I would just like to think that we can, you know, come up with some type of, you know, compromise and what have you.
And I would absolutely encourage you folks to work with the CEO, I really would. But I also think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we do due diligence and we have, I think, verifiable information that we can go forward and at least start the process.
Fair enough.
But I absolutely applaud you for wanting to work with him and I think that's something that can be done also.
All right.
But Mr. Hammond doesn't have the time to go up there. That's not his job, go up there and decide what's junk and what's not junk.
No, I think when we're talking that, they know, you've already admitted, you know that some stuff doesn't belong there. You know, I mean, that's.
Right.
Anybody sitting here seeing that can realize that there's some stuff that needs to be taken care of. You guys make an effort and my guess is we can work with that and go from there, but I still think we need to start the process.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Denise Perkins-Fields and I'm Scott's wife. The main thing that we need clarified tonight, besides the court stuff, is exactly what he wrote in his letter to you tonight, is we are of the understanding that Jeff, when he came out that day, that he no longer wanted to work with us, that he didn't want to sit down with us and he didn't want to help us clarify what, where Scott needed to start. That day, Scott said to him, "I'm willing to start this week. The weather's supposed to be okay. It's supposed to be cold, but no snow." It's supposed to be cold, but no snow." Obviously, this was two weeks ago. Can we sit down and talk about where to start? Start a list. Start, you know, where do we start? And Jeff, I don't want to quote you.
That's, that's, that's not his job.
Right, but, well, it is, right?
No, he is, he is, he has interpreted that, that it justified as a, in his understanding, it's a junkyard. I mean, your son-in-law basically has said that, you know, there's some stuff that shouldn't be there. I don't think it's our code enforcement officer's responsibility to go out there and identify each piece.
No, we weren't asking him to, to do that. We weren't asking him to come back out and identify the pieces or anything. We were asking him to sit down with us and start talking about what needed to be moved out, simply, you know, whatever. For example, Scott, you need to get rid of all the tires, all the useless tires, okay? And so that he could start that process, because he needs some direction in what, what is not okay.
You've mentioned some things right there. I mean, start, start with that.
But then, okay.
Start, start with that. Start with, start with those seventeen vehicles that were on the property.
There are some useful tires out there, but there are some, you see what I'm saying?
Denise, I can't, I can't, but I can't argue with you here. Again, I've stated too many times that this is, our job is going to send this to court, okay?
But you guys just said that you applauded us for wanting to work with Jeff.
No, I applauded you for wanting to clean the place up, okay?
So he, he doesn't have to work with us. We just...
No, that's not true at all.
I'm confused, is what I'm saying.
I want, he has, he has tried to work. He's gone out and what we're dealing with tonight is this, okay? This is what we're dealing with tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
And, and so I can't disagree with the fact that...
You're more, you're more than welcome to come in during business hours and sit down with the C E O, sit down with the town manager.
He told us that we weren't.
No, that's, well, that...
He said that he wasn't, he was not interested in doing that. That's what you told us that day.
You can, you can talk to us, though, okay? You can come down and talk to the town manager, if you've got an issue with an employee.
Okay. That would be great. We're not trying to be difficult. We're trying to understand.
Okay, come, come and talk to the town manager, okay? But what you guys deal with tonight is this.
All right.
Thank you.
I would like to say one more thing. And, yes, we will be down to set up an appointment to talk to you, but if I could just read the one sentence from Mr. Hammond's report after coming out that day, please understand it's my current position that everything in the front yard and everything in the back yard is contributing to the junkyard violation. Everything on my property, everything, as far as he's concerned, is junk.
And that's something you should bring, if you wish, to bring to the judge. It doesn't, it's not anything we will act on to know.
Okay, I, I'm just, I'm looking for some rationality also throughout all this. I have a swing on a tree out on the front lawn. Do I have to take the swing down?
Anything else on the public? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Travis Tierney. I don't know this gentleman from anything. I'm assuming that all of his personal property rights have been taken into consideration with this matter, and that you've afforded him every ability to remedy this with you before court action is being considered.
That is correct.
Okay. With that done, with the video that I've seen, the only things that I can see that are considered junkyard by main statute would be the automobiles. Is that correct? You can't have more than three unregistered vehicles in your property.
Non, non usable refuse from, from construction companies.
Okay, so that just comes down to definition as well then as well.
Correct. And that's, that's not up to us. That's up to, that's what we have court.
But, so has everything been done? As a taxpayer, considering we're going to help fit the bill, if he goes to court, if he loses, I mean, if he wins, we're going to have to, we're paying for attorneys one way or the other, I guess is what I'm trying to, trying to say, and I don't know if that's a good use, but I don't know how much time and energy you guys have already put into this, and I don't know how willing he has been willing to work with this, but from the video I saw, the only issue I have and can see is the vehicles themselves. So, that's all I just wanted to say, and I hope that's taken into consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this subject?
Yeah. My name's Eric Bowden, and I couldn't care less if he had a junkyard. It might come in handy to somebody. You wouldn't happen to have one of those cables that go to a Ford Ranger tailgate? Pretty good chance of it, and it's all yours to have it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Let me answer that question. He's entitled to a junkyard, but, but not in that particular area. That, that, there's, you can have junkyards in this town, but that is a residential area, and that's the way it was designated, and that is what has brought the complaint.
So who complained? Did his neighbors complain?
Doesn't, it doesn't matter who complained. It's, it's our understanding that that will qual, well, looks like it qualifies as a junkyard. We need the judge to determine that, and if that's the case and it's determined to be a junkyard, it's not allowed in that particular zone. Mr. Fields, welcome to get a piece of property that allows junkyards and have anything he wants there.
One's a pretty good place to live.
Okay, anyone, anything else? Anything further from the council? Okay. We'll act on this, R. 2015-65, authorizing a code enforcement officer to file a complaint in the district court pursuant to Rule 80 K of the main rules of civil procedures. How would the council like to proceed?
I move the resolve, R. 2015-65, be approved.
Second. We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Procedure, I think you had, you had one other item on the discussion. I don't know if you, you know, went over on purpose, or I just wanted to remind you.
Budget discussion. Yeah, D. We'll get, come to D now.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Item D is physically a two sixteen budget discussions.
Yeah, real quick, guys, I'd like to start this officially. I'm starting to get some of the budgets in. I'm taking a look at my stuff for administration. Of course, sewer budget, I'm going to need a little help on from probably the mayor, since he worked on a good portion of the budget last time, too. But looking at probably getting this started February nineteenth in earnest, of course, that will give us, I don't know how you normally do it, if it's on the off weeks of the council, or if it's every week. How, how do you usually go about it?
We'll get last, last year's copy, but I think it's on the off weeks.
Okay. So, that would mean that then, I think that would drive us into March, so then two of the guys would only miss about one of those discussions, so with that, that's how I'll go. And during the first meeting, one of the things I'd like to do is discuss what we're going to do overall for the budgets. Right now, I've told them to try to keep everything as flat as possible, but you and I all know that we have some hard decisions to make to look at the budget, the, the reduced revenue that we could be faced coming up with the sale of the mill. Of course, not everything's known, and we won't know everything till maybe April first and until afterwards, but I think I'll need some direction on what we're going to look at for alternative service delivery, or whatever that may be. Related to that is that I did submit a change bill, I think I emailed it to all of you guys, for the sudden and severe law change, that asked for some relief from the state, one being a hundred million dollar reduction in our state valuation for the immediate year coming up, and also a, asking for them to give us the six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that we stand to lose from the Betty program, which is basically tax-exempt property that the state reimburs us for, for seventy-one percent for personal property, most of it being on the mill, and I'm guessing it's going to be lost, given the fact that it's no longer going to be used in manufacturing. So looking for a crutch there. Not sure how likely we are to get that, but the biggest thing for the, the bill will be the, of course, getting the sudden and severe law back intact to what it was supposed to be, and that is when we do our appraisal, that we will be able to get that reduced, and that one, that one final figure for each of the years that we're doing a sudden and severe calculation will be used for figuring out what we should get for education funding. And there's several other bills going in, and I'm not sure what those bills are going to say. They're mostly going to be similar. Some are going to ask, like Madison, I believe, has a bill coming in that also deals with Madison and their issue. But the one problem with most of that is that it won't give us relief until the following year unless the state agrees to reduce our value by a hundred million. Did I say a hundred thousand? I think I did. Hundred million first year for our valuation, and then also the money for Betty. Beyond that, I don't know what else you might like to know, but, you know, we're facing some losses, and we're not sure what they might be yet.
Eric, I know, I read the bill that you submitted with the suggested changes.
Yeah.
Did you get anything back with any kind of a procedural schedule as to when? I'm, I'm not really conversant with the procedure of bill going through the process. When will this go? I mean, is it going to be next month, or is it going to be October and November? I mean, you know, type of thing.
No, it'll depend on how many bills have been printed in front of it, and right now, I think there were like eighty on my last L P C thing, so there's probably a bunch of the other ones in the bucket. I saw somebody just submitted a couple other bills. I forget that I read in the Bangor Daily that haven't been assigned any document numbers yet, and they should be once they are. I'm guessing this one is behind several, so I think it would be another month, but they may end up taking all of them and then doing one public hearing on all of them, rather than just one of them, or taking them all during that one public hearing. So I don't have a date yet, because I haven't even seen the final written document, although it looks similar to that one, because that one was pretty much already done by the, the legislative aides, and then I added the additional language in there for those other two provisions.
And you will let us know what the, what the hearing will be, so we can have a, a field trip to Augusta?
Yeah, as soon as I know, you'll know. And Campell's supposed to tell me when that is, as soon as he knows.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We did meet with the, the superintendent of schools and the chairman of the, of the school board, and there isn't really great news from the state coming from their side either. First one, probably our insurance rates are going to go up ten to thirteen percent. The state's requiring more of a contribution from the communities towards the retirement fund for teachers, and also the amount of money that the maximum that a town needs to raise in the mill rate is going from eight point one up to eight point four. So those are all things that are going to affect the budget also. So there's going to be less funding coming from the state on the educational side also. And they're aware of that, of the situation, and, and they're addressing their budget now, so.
And there's a good little brief summary. I have to cite a bulletin, a bulletin of the Maine Municipal Association on the, on the total budget impacts. I think they even use, they don't use Bucksport, but they use several communities on some of the impacts in the various communities, that certainly in the end, you can tell they're not made whole.
Any questions at all for, on the budget? Okay, let's go on to the agenda items. She and Dave brought it to my attention. I skipped over, we want to read to that. We were discussing it, I wanted to go to the resolve, so. Okay, let's go to item B, Consider Resolve R. 2015-70, accepting the work completed by Bangor Gas regarding the expansion of services to the Town of Bucksport.
Mr. Mylan?
For, for those members of the council that may not have been involved with, with this project, in 2013, the town entered into agreement with, with Bangor Gas for, to expand gas service into, into town in two phases. One phase was to take place in 2013, and one phase was, the second phase was to take place in 2014. There were contributions and aids of construction that were agreed upon by the council and Bangor Gas at the time, and we're at the point where the, the, the phase two, or the, the second year of this project was in 2014, has been completed. In that, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have the, the resolve in front of me, but I listed it in the resolve, and I just said what the, the resolve number is for 2013, and it, it lists in there what the amount was. And in this particular case, for phase two, it called for a fifty thousand dollar contribution in aid of construction, and it should, it lists in there to what account that, that was coming out of. That, that being said, it said that it was, it had to be at the acceptance of the town, that we would pay that fifty thousand dollars contribution in aid of construction, or kayak, at the, once the town accepted the work. I talked with, with Duane Neto, Public Works Director, this, late this fall, and asked him to, to go over all the work that had been done in the phase two, the expansion, to make sure that all of the reconstruction work that was completed. The, the requirement was for them to leave the, the land in as good or better condition than they found it. Duane's comment to me was that he had, though all of the work was completed, he's concerned that some of the sidewalks, some of the, the asphalt work will probably settle over the, over the winter. And I would, I would say that it, that did in fact happen in the 2013 portion of it, and we had a, a amount we had withheld in order to, to make sure that that got done. And so they ended up doing that first in 2014. They, you know, came back and rehad, had to redo some of the work that was done the previous year. I asked Duane if ten percent would cover that, what his expectations were, that if he had to do it himself, for some reason that Bangor Gas didn't do it, would that cover it? And he said it would. So I talked with Bangor Gas, and even though it wasn't in the original contract, they agreed that a retainage of ten percent of the fifty thousand was appropriate, and they had no problems with it, and if they need to come back in the spring and do that work, that, you know, they will do that. So the, that amount is five thousand dollars, so the resolve that you have before you is authorizing the actual payment of the forty-five thousand in the, for the contribution, for the contribution in aid of construction on, on phase two. I did have a conversation with them today, trying to guess what questions the council might have, and so I asked them for a list of how many people had, they had actually signed up in that phase two, and unfortunately, they weren't able to give me their numbers. They were hoping to get it to me by the end of the day, but I checked my email before I came in here, and I hadn't seen that yet. And secondly, I asked if they, if they were planning a, a phase three, and I was pleasantly surprised to hear that they are. So if your question was going to be, are they going to do anything more than this? They already have phase three planned, and, and actually, it's approved by their, by their board already for 2015, and there's no contribution in aid of construction moving forward. So they're continuing to expand their services in, in Bucksport as well. So I'm standing ready to answer any questions you may have.
You guessed right.
Those are the questions?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I'd be more than glad to give you the information on the first question as soon as they get it to me, and they promised me they would get it to me, it just, I didn't get it yet today.
Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
I move we approve Resolve 2015-70, and the amount as specified.
We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Further from the council? All those in favor?
Go ahead.
Opposed? Motion passes?
Yes, we do.
I'm going to do that, please. One more second, more enthusiasm.
Okay, item C. Consider resolve R. 2015-71, setting the rate of interest for delinquent sewer bills for the calendar year 2015. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, seven percent is the rate that they use.
Stand.
We have motion to second, approve the resolve, setting the rate for interest on delinquent sewer bills. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, item D. Consider resolve R. 2015-72, to approve, approval of additional funds for the decorating committee.
Really quick, back in November, the council decided that we would double the contribution of decorating committee, put up some additional decorations and lights for the holiday season, and this is just getting that eighteen hundred moved over into that account from a designated surplus fund balance for that purpose. And then that will give us some balance to probably add to that for next year, too, which would be good.
We got, I know I did, at least, and I believe everybody else probably did. We got nothing but a lot of really good compliments about the lights this year downtown. They were very good, and I think it was well worth money spent.
Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
I'm over.
Second. We have motion to second, approve the resolve as presented. Anything further from the public? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to thank Chris Grindel for all his work and coordinating it. He did a lot of work on this.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Where is he? He's watching from home.
He's watching, he's on TV.
Other background, rather.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
Dave, you vote?
I did.
You did, okay.
I'm affirmative.
Consider resolve R. 2015-73, setting a uniform per capita rate charge for all communities utilizing the Bucksport Animal Shelter. Chief.
I had mentioned you back in July when we took on Hamden, and we set a per capita rate of seventy-five cents per capita, that I was going to be coming back to the council after I looked at that budget, and I think you have it in front of you, what we're charging people to use the animal shelter currently, and this was done some time ago, is my understanding. And, from what I have found, you know, we have a rate of anything from twenty-five cents per capita to ninety-nine cents per capita, and I understand, from doing a little bit of research, I found that the reason that some are lower than others is because of subsidies that we receive from different communities for different services that we provide to them. I just, I have to look out for the animal shelter itself, and I'm not sure, no one from any other towns have come to me that we service at the animal shelter and asked for this, but in looking at this, I just think it's sensible if we're going to charge a per capita rate to do business at that animal shelter, that it'd be the same for everybody. And in doing that, as you can see on the bottom of that chart, there will be, obviously, there'd be no difference in Hamden. Orland would be an increase of eleven hundred and eighteen dollars. Orienton would have a decrease of eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and Prospect would have an increase of two hundred and eighty-one dollars. And it would actually increase the overall budget for the animal shelter five hundred and three dollars. I did look into the Bangor Humane Society today, had the animal control officers do that, and the going rate is a dollar forty-three per capita. So, at seventy-five cents per capita, I think, I don't think that that is unreasonable, and I realize some people will be happy and some people won't be so happy, but I did, I did up some figures also, and if these communities were to go somewhere else, like the Bangor Humane Society, Orland would be paying three thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars, Prospect would be a thousand thirteen dollars, and Orienton would be five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So, there's really no comparison there either. I'm just asking the council to look at that, at that proposal. I just think it's fair, we do the same for everybody, so.
It's just absolutely common sense to charge everybody the same figure, so if anybody's coming, instead of saying, "Well, we'll wait and see what we can work out with you," we can say it's seventy-five cents.
We're anywhere from twenty-five cents to ninety-nine cents. It's just up and down.
Never made any sense before.
Right.
Was originally like Orland and Prospect, because they were, they were quite a bit lower, was that because they helped build a shelter?
No.
And so?
The subsidies that some of the towns paid to the town, like Orland pays for annual subsidies for dispatch, ambulance, recreation, solid waste, and animal control. Prospect pays for recreation and animal control. Verona pays for fire, ambulance, recreation, so they pay some extra subsidies that really have nothing to do with the animal shelter, and I think that was a reasoning way back when, was it, they're already paying for other services, so, and I'm not sure where we come up with the other per capita cost for Orienton and other places that.
I know Verona's not on here, they?
We don't do Verona, no.
Oh, we don't? Where do they go?
I don't know. I thought of that today, I'm not sure.
But we do their animal control?
No, we don't do any animal control besides the town of Bucksport, just the shelter they bring, but I don't know where Verona goes.
Okay.
So, this is just seventy-five cents for the shelter, not the animal control?
For the animal shelter, yes, for services at the animal shelter, and then, under the contracts, they actually pay more for medical expenses, anything else, who the animals they bring in, we bill them for that, and storage, and up to, I think it's nine days.
Now, is this going to circumvent the charge that we charge Orland for all those services? This will go in place of it?
No, as far as the ambulance and stuff?
No, no. Orland pays us the stipends for animal control, right?
No, just the shelter. This is shelter services only. We do animal control only for Bucksport, as far as going out.
Has their own animal control.
Right. They have their own animal control. This is for shelter services, only bringing their animals to us.
Now, the last we knew, I think we got confused, is that our current animal control officer at this time was an animal control officer in some of these other towns, but that's totally separate. He gets paid like that.
He does like, they pay. Yeah, he's a separate drug, yeah.
All right, how would the council like to proceed?
So moved.
Second. We have motion to second, approve the resolve as presented. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
That's a good opportunity to add a boy to the animal shelter. Anybody on the council who hasn't been there, they really should, because that is a nice building, they take real good care of their animals.
Item 10. Appointments, assignments, and elections. A is election of chairman pro temp.
Do you want to do that? It should be the ordinance committee chairperson, according to the charter.
The charter. The charter, I just, that's who it is. So, if that's the case, we don't need to have an election.
As long as it is, it'll save us if we have to call any emergency meetings, then, just so we know ahead of time who's going to.
You, Peter.
I'm going on a boat, remember?
You're still going to probably approve the committee assignments or something, right? So, he can try to enangle himself out of the.
Is this the first step toward a lieutenant mayor?
Approve council committee assignments. We did make an adjustment at a request of one of our councillors, but when I did this, I tried to be as fair as possible. There are two councillors that are chairman of two committees. All the other councillors are chairman of at least one committee. Most, all councillors have four committees they're on, except, again, there's two that have five committees. So, you know, this is hopefully in the final draft, a few people are all set with it. Have a motion to approve the council committee assignments?
So moved. Second.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, item 11. Town manager's report.
Well, let's see. First of all, Mr. Gagian, did you want to mention, ready to go, there he is. Ah, sorry. Ah, my eyes are going, the sinus infection. I see Dan's here, and I was going to mention that in my report, but did you want to mention what's going on next week?
Yeah, actually, that's not the reason.
Oh, well, anyways, well.
The main chiefs of police, I'm on the executive board now, and they have different awards every year at the February convention in Portland, and we had the incident down here in the river where the young boy drowned, and his grandfather drowned, and Craig Bowden, Dan Howland, and Lieutenant Rod Schreff from the Maine State Police, that day went in the river to save these people, and one of the awards to the main chiefs is a bravery award, and I submitted those three to be considered for that award, and they were chosen to get that award February 6th, and that's taking place down in Portland, at Bangor, down there on February 6th.
Nice job.
Job very well.
Please relay our appreciation to Chief Bowden, he's left, but please make sure he hears that also.
I'm not done.
I didn't think you would.
I thought you were getting ready to move on, so I heard you licking your lips like you're ready to go, so I figured I'd stop you.
Some little messages there.
Well, most of them, I think they're all gone, but the Weeblos are here tonight. I think you caught them at the beginning of the meeting. I think they probably rushed home to turn their TVs, the access channels, so they could see the room where they were. If they could have been in two places at once, they would have, because that was part of the highlight of their trip, was the media room, and seeing where that all took place. CMP pole mystery. Byron will be happy to know. The reason I couldn't figure out the CMP pole, and they wouldn't take responsibility for it, is I put Mr. Mylan onto the case and found out it's not a CMP pole. They called back and said it's a Fairpoint pole, and the pole next to it is a Fairpoint pole, so that makes sense.
Have fun getting that fixed.
So, based on my experience with Fairpoint, I would think it would be quicker if we probably went down and ground that out of the ground for now, and then dealt with Fairpoint at a later date on some other issue, but, because I think it would be much quicker. But, so that apologized to CMP for all these months. It wasn't them, it was a Fairpoint pole that sticks out of the sidewalk.
I would apologize to CMP too, but I would also, if they had told us that months ago, it would have solved a lot of problems.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what they did when I'd leave a message or whatever, they'd say, "It's not our pole," and then nobody would follow up. But Dave found out when he talked to the person that it was, in fact, not their pole. Audit report, I think this is the fourth draft, I've been through it a few times. It's kind of difficult to do this, given the fact I wasn't here for much of the year last year, except for the last two weeks, but I think I've got it whittled down pretty good, but it's in your emails, I didn't print it out, it's eighty-five pages. If somebody wants a hard copy, though, I will give it to them. Also, I want to give you guys copies of the EMA plans on the mill for the dam properties. One of the things the mill wanted for the closing was for the council or myself to sign off on that plan. I know that we've all had questions on what the status of the dams are. From what I know, just so you know, the quick answer was that AIM will become verso, and they will continue to maintain the dams. They will also look at alternate uses for the dams, and when I say that, they'll be investigating whether or not they could do some hydro power, stuff like that on them. Other than that, we don't know a lot about it, and they're saying that plan will be the same as it was before, so that's the answer, the simple answer we're getting, but I get you guys copies of it, just talks about the responses and how, who will be notified and everything else. So, that's that, and I want to introduce Sue Ann Craig, who's our new senior center director, who was chosen just this week after we interviewed candidates for the job. It was a tough decision, Sue Ann impressed the committee, and we feel that she's going to do a great job. I don't want to go over all of her resume. She's a former school teacher, though, and also, of course, is the, what is the title for Gardner Commons?
I'm the resident services coordinator.
Resident ser, I was going to say executive director, but I knew that wasn't the title. So, right, right. So, I don't know if you just wanted to get up and say a few words or not, and she's going to be at the meal on Monday, I'm going to be there also, along with Bill Perkins, and go over, introduce or do a new office and things like that. What we've started out being is that the schedule initially is still going to be the twenty hours a week, but we're going to just require, and right now, the two hours every day for the meals on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then we're going to allow her to figure out how to best use that twenty hours each week to, and establish a record, a schedule. I'm going to probably recommend that Wednesday she do a fuller day, like about six hours, that way, during lunch on Monday, she can get some suggestions from, or some comments from some of the seniors. Wednesday, she'll have a block of time to investigate, and then Friday, when she's there, she might casually be able to, you know, go up and strike up a conversation with them and give them an answer to any of their questions, but that will remain to be seen on how that works out, so.
Okay, well, just to introduce myself, I would like to say I was a teacher for thirty years, retired in 2008, and moved right on into the part-time services coordinator job at Gardner Commons, and that's six hours a week, and I intend to keep that position along with the twenty hours a week that I will be doing at the senior center, because it just seems like a perfect combination, and I seem to be moving into a second career here, and I'm very excited about the opportunity to be at the senior center. I think that I will be able to have the opportunity to do some things that I wasn't able to do. I've done education and matched people with services at Gardner Commons, but there really isn't an opportunity to do recreational activities or any of the other things that I think are very important for the wellness of seniors. So, I look forward to working with all of the different facets of the committees in Bucksport with the police department, the fire department, and education and recreation for seniors, and I'm open to all of the ideas that everybody has for how we can move our senior center forward, and also keep the same things that are working for the seniors who are there.
So, you got this job in spite of the Tomasco bloodline?
Well, I, yeah.
They were all aware of that, were they?
I didn't say Sue Ann Tomasco, Craig, I just said Sue Ann Craig. Bill advised me of that.
I will say that, you know, it's a small town, and things get around, and of course, I learned these little secrets, too, that she was a native and had roots and everything. Had no impact on the hiring whatsoever, because the other candidate was a great candidate too, but, so I think it's, she'll be a great fit.
I think, I've had the pleasure of working with Sue Ann since 2010 on the board of Gardner Commons. She has done an excellent job. The people up there will really like her, and she makes herself, goes out of her way to make herself available for the people. I think she'll be an excellent fit at the senior center. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I really look forward to it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I like to socialize, and I like to eat, so starting from the top.
I got one other thing, we can do it now, or do it in a couple of minutes, or I figure I'll do it now. Lindsay Marston is here. She wants to talk about a arts festival that she wants to hold, and before she goes through all of the work to submit a plan and everything, she wants to make sure that you are on board with it. I know, I should have kept your, I said eight, right? I should have kept.
I came here early to say, I have a little headnote that might help explain what I'm hoping to do.
Thank you.
So, as Derek mentioned, I'm Lindsay Marston. I am a resident of Orland, I hope that's okay. What I'm hoping to do, I've been working with BACAS since last fall, partnering with them, and hoping to bring an arts festival to the waterfront here in Bucksport. them and hoping to bring an arts festival to the waterfront here in Bucksport. Seems like it's a good time to bring a positive focus and to bring some new events to town. I've been doing art festivals for several years, and have been eyeing that location for quite a while, too. It's just a perfect location to bring new people to town and bring a change of focus to here, too. I initially, like I said, started working with BACIS and made contact with WLbz2 in hopes that they might be interested in bringing the old Bangor Sidewalk Arts Festival to Bucksport. That arts festival was canceled a few years back, there just wasn't as much interest. There's quite a bit of local arts activities going on in downtown Bangor, and they were having a hard time getting artists. So I contacted them to see if they might want to bring it to Bucksport. They are very interested in doing something to help Bucksport at this time and are very interested in promoting this event. They unfortunately do not want to handle coordinating it and putting it on themselves, but have asked that I work with BACIS to do that. So what I'm envisioning, you can see the map in front of you, for the first year, from what I've plotted out, there's room for about 50 artists on the waterfront. Those little yellow blocks are about 10 by 10 tent spaces, which is pretty standard for art festivals. Hoping to have some food vendors in the parking lot that you see over by the Harborview Grill, possibly live entertainment, maybe near the gazebo. And there's certainly room for overflow area where we have ghost port or other parking lots in the area, if by some chance we really get a spectacular turnout and registration. Parking is certainly available in local parking spots and private parking lots and along Main Street. I would certainly be willing to have portable toilets if that's necessary, trash receptacles, whatever we need to accommodate the extra visitor traffic. I'm not anticipating that too much traffic control would be necessary, maybe just blocking off the two main entrances and those parking areas, possibly controlling traffic to the marina. I haven't quite worked all that out yet, but there shouldn't be a huge amount necessary. So what I'm hoping to do is have the arts festival on Saturday, August 15th. It leaves a little bit of a buffer after the Bay Festival, so we have a little recovery time from that, and is early enough so that we're not competing with other events. There are quite a few other arts festivals going on, on the surrounding weekends, and then, of course, the Folk Festival in Bangor is going on at the end of August as well. So while August seems very far away, for artists that do this sort of venue, the deadlines are quickly approaching. So I'd like to get registrations going as soon as possible and start promoting this event as soon as possible. And I'm just a little bit nervous about doing that without a commitment from the town that that date can be reserved and this location can be reserved. So I understand the process is typically a festival license application, and I don't feel like I have enough information at this point to complete one of those to the degree that you guys would need. So what I'm hoping to get tonight is either a commitment to reserve that date, or maybe a preliminary approval to reserve that date and to have this event in that location, and then I can complete the application once I have all of the vendor information and the other details.
Well, I think, I think it's an excellent idea. I have a couple of questions. The artists that would have the various stalls, are you anticipating they would be artists who would simply be displaying their wear or their crafts, or would they be actually doing whatever they do, sculpting, painting, blah, blah, blah?
That's a very good question.
Which way are you looking at it?
I am, my target for this would be people that are selling their wares. So it'd be similar to the sidewalk art festivals, to fine arts festivals in Bar Harbor. The closest model, I guess, that I'm working from is maybe the Belfast Arts in the Park. So no, no live presentations or demonstrations necessarily, but having, having their setup. They would be supplying the tents, they would have all the structures and everything that they need, and would be selling their wares.
Well, that takes care of the other question, which was power, obtaining power, laying the power cables if they were going to be needed, so that takes care of that. But I think this is what we should be using that waterfront for, as often as we can to try to get, just what this will do, draw people into Bucksport, and then hopefully Main Street will, will just by osmosis, will gather some of those people. So I think it's an excellent idea, and I, I think we should be more than willing to say, "Yeah, we'll reserve the date." I don't think we can say yes to a permit simply because we don't have it, but give you a, "Yeah, we're in favor of it," and conditional upon the approval, the submission of a completed permit with everything, that I would be 100% behind it. I think it's a great idea.
Are you doing this all by yourself?
I am working with BACIS. We've got kind of a small side committee formed. I guess you could say I'm leading the effort at this point, and we'll, I've got an application registration form ready to go, and vendor guidelines ready to go, and press releases ready to go. But certainly, once that initial effort is made to get the registrations up and going, I'll be counting on that, that committee to help me.
You're talking one day or a week, all weekend?
Just a single day, just Saturday.
Now, all these yellow squares with the intentions where the artists will be?
That's the idea. I've walked the area, I will admit, I didn't walk the marina. I wasn't sure at the time what the ownership was and how that area could possibly be used, and not wanting to disturb the people that do use it. So that's just a really rough outline, the rest of it. I did walk and sighted out where tents would fit, keeping in mind that there's a lot of landscaping down there, and whether it's rocks and slopes, there's, there's a lot of space that looks like it might be available but isn't quite suitable for a tent. So that, that's the closest idea I have at this point without walking.
We could move some to the overflow.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, 'cause I think the marina park is gonna have to stay marina park.
Well, you can move some to the parking lot of the Historical Society, too.
Yeah.
And then right in back of the Liberty Bank.
And I'm glad to see you using Flagpoint, get artists down there with our art and get all those together.
It's a beautiful spot.
Okay, how does the council want to proceed? Just want to give a preliminary approval?
I think all we need to consensus on the approval, let her, let block in that date, not let anybody else have it, and go. I don't see a big long line of people looking for dates.
I was thinking not, but, you know.
Let's give her that.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, I'm hoping to bring a lot of these things to here over next year, so actually, there will be a lot of people looking for dates coming up in a few years. Probably not August 15th.
First come, first served.
So that one's off the table, but, but if I get my way, we'll have the other things, of course. There is a group working on doing some stuff on Wednesdays all summer long, too, coming up, that we're still working on, and which will be, the Wednesdays on Main, I think, is what they're going by, and which will be bringing some entertainment on those days, and hopefully we'll have some other things, like the Buskers Festival, maybe, that we heard about.
That's another excellent idea.
Right, and that could be the monthly thing if it, if it works well, so we might have to try it, but I think that's got a lot of potential, too, to bring people to Bucksport. And I'd like to concentrate some of these things to actually be on Main Street, too, because I think that's important to drive people up on Main Street, is to have the things up on Main Street, and maybe, you know, that's one of the things I was looking at this week was some of the parking lots, and I said, "Well, if we gave up three or four of the parking spots in various places right adjacent to the sidewalk, is that the end of the world?" Probably not, given the fact that people will find other places to park to go to those spaces, because that's where the events will be.
And that may be something Lindsay could look at, is up in front of the old hardware store.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
And Franklin shows you a line, but I, you know, there's a couple of places, you wouldn't get a lot of them, but you'd get a few vendors up there, which will hopefully get people to migrate that way.
Right, and that's the idea. And, you know, and maybe this year, and maybe this is just the tip of the iceberg, and it can grow on. I didn't want to overdo and micromanage the event, and while she's planning it the first year, we might want to look at that, you know, coming up in the future, because I think the best way to get people up on Main Street is to have things on Main Street, and it also gives the businesses buy-in. But most importantly, I think people are gonna go to the waterfront anyways and find that waterfront during these events, and with some careful signage, you can blend the two together.
Anything else in the manager's report?
You'll be happy to know I am done.
Well, good. Okay, item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for council and the public.
Number 12.
That's right after 11. Don't you slap me.
I think I got voted to be second, John.
Okay, I had it right here in my hand, too.
I know you did, that seemed scary.
Public hearing and approval of any licenses and permits, if applicable. We have one here, license from Richard Gray doing business as Blue Water Seafood, Victura's license. How would the council like to proceed?
Noting no violations, I move for approval.
We have motion and second to approve the Victura's license for Richard Gray doing business as Blue Water Seafood. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? We do have two, item 13, discussion items, not on the agenda. We have a quick claim deed here for James and Vivian Huestis for sewer liens for 2013 and 2014.
Make a motion, we take up an item not on the agenda?
Second. Okay, we have motion and second to take up item not on the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Again, we're gonna do this quick claim deed for sewer liens, paid sewer liens, how would the council like to proceed?
Move, we approve it, assign it, or whatever. Needs to be done.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the quick claim deed. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? And we all have to sign this and pass it along. Okay.
This is one again? Chair got riddled because we've given. Well, kicking in right now in fact.
The bills have already been sent out.
Okay, certification of commitment of sewer user rates quarterly. How would the council like to proceed?
Is another item that's not on the agenda, is it?
Yeah.
The what?
That sewer commitment in.
Oh, yeah. I wouldn't put that on the other one.
Second.
Okay, we get a motion and a second to take up an item not on the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? And again, this is certification of commitment for sewer user rates quarterly. How would the council like to proceed?
That sets a new quarterly sewer rate, is that what?
It's every quarter.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah. I move we approve the assessment for the quarterly sewer rate.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the commitment for the quarterly sewer rates. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
Second.
Okay, item 14, upcoming public hearings. I don't believe we have any. Fifteen, designation of topic for committee assignments and scheduling of committees. We have waterfront committee to discuss LED lighting.
Yeah, why do you want to have that?
For the next council meeting?
Sure.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
That's on February 12th, I think.
12th?
I think so.
Okay.
What date?
Oudness Committee Review.
12th.
Rules?
Five.
You want to do that sometime in March when everyone's back?
You let me know when, it would be a good time to do that, Mr. Mayor.
We'll set it sometime either the next meeting or the meeting after.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, maybe the second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Second council meeting?
Yeah.
Before, before the second council meeting in March.
Okay.
And don't forget to.
We can remind, we can remind me again in February, correct?
We, all right.
Are we gonna address?
Any additional committee assignments and scheduling? I don't believe we have any right now, do we?
Peter, are we gonna also address?
Yes, sir.
Request from Maine?
Yeah, I was gonna say, did we have any other comments?
I was just wondering if you'd be scheduling a finance committee meeting? We have a couple CDs that are getting ready to mature in March for the town.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Finance committee.
A finance committee meeting. We have a couple CDs getting ready to mature in the month of March.
Peter Stewart?
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to set that up prior to March, before maturity dates.
Yeah.
And that would have to be taken care of when?
I believe the date's on March 1st.
So, the second, the second meeting in February would be close enough, or?
If you can deal with it in one meeting.
If you can deal with it in one meeting, you'll have to get proposals and accept proposals.
Oh, 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 are we actually? Yeah, you'll have to.
Just the first meeting in February, you're gonna act on it the second meeting in February?
We've got the waterfront at the first, is there anything on the waterfront that we couldn't move to the second meeting in February?
No.
Okay, let's move, let's move the waterfront to the second meeting in February, and then we'll do the finance at five? 5:30, 6?
Sounds good to me.
On, on the 12th?
On the 12th.
5:30?
Let's go, let's go 5:30 on the finance.
Let's change this.
And we'll do the waterfront at 6 on the 26th.
Maybe.
So that's 5:30 on the 12th for the finance committee?
Yes.
So the 12th and the 26th of February?
You gonna fly back for that?
No, I'm here. 6:00 PM. Sounds good.
February, that's right. You're not leaving till 18th, correct?
5:30 finance.
Even better.
David will still be around.
All right, so we'll go 5:30 on the 12th for the finance committee.
Yeah.
And 6 for the?
For the waterfront.
On the 26th.
Yes.
Kathy, on that, you remind me to call the first, too, because I think I got some coming up with them, too, we might as well look at all of them. One of those is gonna just go into a money market, though.
Come on, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, now.
Yeah, I need it for cash flow.
Any additional committee assignments we're scheduling? Anything else? Agenda items needing executive session?
None, but did any of the councillors have any items not on the agenda?
I may have, I want to make a comment if I might, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to congratulate Lindsay on bringing this art thing forward, and, you know, you don't have to look any further than Rockland and Belfast in particular to see what an impact art can have on a community. And there are those, many on the council and in the community, who thinks that often investment follows art. The thing, you know, we spent a lot of money on Christmas decorations this year, and I think it was money well spent. I may recall the letter from Mike Hurley at Belfast, he said, "Decorate for Christmas in Bucksport like grandpa died, but the kids still want Christmas." And I thought that was pretty well put, because it's not just the things we do, it's, a lot of this is gonna be the spirit of residents of Bucksport, being able to rise to the occasion with big things and little things. And I wanted to say two things, two relatively, well, one of them a little more difficult than the other, but not impossible. I don't know how much the attendance at Fort Knox has increased since we put an observation tower in there, but it has been exponentially large, it's huge, going from hundreds to many thousands. Finding a way to get those people across the river, from stopping at that observation tower to come into Bucksport, how it's done, what's done by vans, what's done by volunteers, however it's done, I think we have to start to give, start to give some thought. And getting people, when the cruise, I've talked to Dave about this, when the cruise ships come in, volunteers on the waterfront with T-shirts on, and finding a way to get them around Bucksport. And the reason I say that is, I've been talking to people who grew up in the area, not Bucksport, but grew up in the area, Ellsworth, Brewer, and that, they have, many of them have no idea what Bucksport has to offer. And when they come here and they get a trip around the athletic fields, the trails, people don't know, I don't mean that there's any lack of advertising, but it's just astounding, no matter how much you advertise, people still don't know about this. And then we tackle the one thing that makes, gonna make, anytime I go into a town, you go into a town, the first thing you look at's the Main Street. And in my judgment, these are big things that have to be, I personally think that something's gonna have to be done about the electric lines, and maybe we're gonna have to spend some money. So maybe some additional awnings that connect from building to building, but we're gonna have to make the commitment to have a better-looking Main Street, and that's what I'm thinking, and I like the idea. Art is not gonna be the full answer, but it's gonna be a big part of it, in my humble opinion. And I always have nothing but humble opinions.
Any other discussion items from the council?
I got one more.